All righty, we'll go ahead and cover ourselves to order. And we'll uh start out with Mrs. Siner, would you open up to the word for her?
Thank you, I will have to assemble as we're seeing what tonight. Would we ask that you be at this meeting, but with each, I guess seven and that you're doing in decent and all of these papers will be asked in my name.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we'll come Councilwoman Dickers, Councilwoman Fletcher,
Here.
Councilman Woodin,
Here.
Councilwoman Siner,
Here.
Councilman Downey, Mayor Fletcher,
Here.
Board of Siner. Haven't done from ready. But we do everything. All right, the first order of business then is the November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular council meeting.
Melanie did point out on the first page under the pre, updates on pre-Christmas standard lights. One, two, three, third sentence down and far right inside. Uh, it shows that the judging is on the thirteenth, it was actually yesterday, it was sixteen. So you know that changed. For some reason, I was thinking those were actually happening the night of the dinner. It was for such a small agenda, anything else? Meeting, she gave funds up, let me know.
Anybody have anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion that we approve the November nineteenth minutes with the correction. Somebody will put down a motion.
I'm excited.
Second?
I'll second.
Second, Nicole. All those in favor, say five, say nine.
Aha.
Any opposed, like, say, so ordered. All righty, uh, receiving the November twenty-four, uh, two thousand twenty-four financial statements.
All right, if you think a look for the month of November, our income for the month was fifty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. We had expenditures for the month of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred, fifty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents per surplus for the month of one thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Everything's pretty basic across the board. Nothing, no expenses or anything that really jumped out. Do you have any questions? Kind of a quiet month.
Any questions from anyone? If not, we entertain a motion that we approve the financial statements as presented, so ordered. So, Luke, Jacob, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Michael. All those in favor, say five, say nine.
Aha.
Any opposed, like, say, so ordered. Any more business? Anybody have anything? Did you say something, Ms. Blue?
No.
Oh. How about you say?
I did, but I was stopping to, I'm sorry.
Oh.
If we think about old business, I'm really gonna catch one that we're waiting on in the mural is weather.
Weather, nothing pressure. Actually finish it up somewhat, right? He's almost done.
With the mural.
Yeah, done, but he's not able to put it up there.
Right.
Yeah.
It's supposed to say, we're just waiting on weather.
Yeah, yeah.
The weather and us getting the pressure worship and all that.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But no point until he says so.
Right.
You know, when he's ready, so.
Yeah, Mark said, he said we had had, what, two or three days in a row of fifty, sixty degree weather.
Yeah.
Had the last two, didn't we?
Well, well, we, but it was wet. We had the temperature, we just didn't have.
And we did that, uh, the houses were judged last night.
Oh, yeah. You got the results?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You want to do that?
We'll do that in a few minutes.
Okay.
All righty, so, uh, with that being said, we'll move on and, uh, under new business, uh, we've got generator bids and, uh, I think I've handed everybody now three bids, uh, that we've got. And, uh, and I'll just go through them here real quick and just mention a couple of things about them and, uh, then we can take a vote. First of all, you know, we talked about this, we had some extra money in the ARP funds. Uh, there's actually almost a hundred and ten thousand dollars left in the ARP funds. And so we talked about actually the sanitary board using them for manholes. Uh, since that time, we found, I think, three manholes, so, uh, we really just have not done that project. We think there could be one more of, uh, Bell Hall Maple Road. And so we think if we find another one, we're probably not going to do any at all, uh, up there. But, uh, so in utilizing this and what we've been talking about is if you don't utilize it, you have to send it back to the federal government. Well, you know me, I'm not gonna give anything back. And, uh, so, one thing we talked about before was trying to purchase a generator here. And, uh, we've been asked several times, we've had FEMA here, we've had HUD here, SBA here. And, uh, so, uh, being a cooling center through the summer or warming center, uh, through the winter. So, one of the things we talked about some time back was a generator. So, we've got three bids and, uh, and I just wanted to go over these with you. And kind of what we've been leaning for is doing the, uh, either the two fifty or for the one, uh, PALCO, uh, they actually bid a two hundred and seventy-five kilowatt, uh, generator. The PALCO power systems, their price for the two seventy-five is one hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
What, what's on the back? Is that, is it one?
Yeah, that one's a one fifty and the other one's a one fifty.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
The other one's a two seventy-five.
Okay.
Yes, I, I actually, you know, we, we took two bids. And then looking at it, uh, it looks like the two fifty, two seventy-five is going to be a little heavier system for us. And the one fifty is going to be, uh, close to a power grid and things like that that I would go for the, uh, Appalachian power. The second bid was actually Xpec Power. Uh, Xpec Power came in and you'll see theirs, uh, it would be here. Xpec Powder, and that's, uh, uh, actually for the two fifty, uh, over on, I think, the, uh, second page, over on the back. Their bid is one hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. And that is, uh, the installation, all, all these were installation, uh, uh, and then contacting an electrical contractor to put it all in and everything. So that's their bids, the one twenty-six. The last one was Boyd Caterpillar. And Boyd Cat, the one seventy-five's on the front, the two fifty's on the second page. Uh, and the Boyd Cat number is one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. You're gonna see lead times and, uh, lead time and everything for PALCO is pretty much, uh, available, uh, now. The Xpec Power, uh, was going to be Xpec Power Sand Generator on the two fifty would be sixteen to twenty weeks. Transfer switch is going to be eight to ten weeks. On their bid, uh, they wanted, uh, for us to pay for the equipment and seventy percent of the installation to be paid upfront. And then, uh, they wanted the majority of it upfront. I wasn't too happy about that one, uh, but, uh, being upfront.
That call, how soon was that, would you say?
It's, uh, twenty. You said twenty? Yeah, uh, the two fifty is sixteen to twenty weeks. So, close to five months, you know, to get there. The last one is Boyd Caterpillar. This actually, uh, over on the second page, like I said, the total's one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And you'll see that, uh, as of today, right below that price, generated lead time is eighteen to twenty weeks after approval and release the order. And, uh, so it's pretty close to the same as, uh, Xpec. Uh, then the transfer switch, they're saying was forty to fifty, but actually they came back and told me that they would do that in the up to twenty weeks, same as the generator. So I didn't change it on your, on your sheets, but that's what, uh, Caterpillar told me. So, same timeframe for getting the, uh, transfer switch as it is the generator itself. All these bids, we're pretty much bringing it in, uh, going into our cabinet, which is over in the room over in the gymnasium where the, uh, Christmas trees and all that are being kept over there. And then everything's sitting on the front of the building out front and, uh, with the, uh, meter and all that. So they would actually set that generator and the transfer switch up front over there on the two parking spaces over toward
The police.
BYD, at the police department. So it would still leave them two parking spaces, but we would take the other two to actually put the generator there. I've had everybody look at it, everybody says it'll fit, they'll put some boiliers around it and things like that to protect it, uh, after it's put in. And it'd be pretty much, uh, look wise, will be just about if anybody's been down a sanitary plant, it'll look pretty much like that, you know? And, uh, but, uh, I think right now, just looking at everything and going back and, uh, thinking, you know, which way would we go? I, I think the, uh, the proposal from Boyd Cat is the better way to do it. Uh, cause first of all, I don't know whether or not we could go ahead and write that check, which is what Xpec wanted. The other one is just too high, I think, uh, from PALCO, uh, you know, to pay a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And, you know, right now with this one, it would be just about, you know, what we've got in the account. So I had even contacted the county commissioner about, you know, trying to maybe put some money into it depending on, you know, I thought maybe s- some others might be close to that under bid. Already knew what that bid was. So I thought if we needed it, you know, we could probably get it, and I'm told pretty much that we could probably have that forty to fifty.
How much is Boyd Cat one in the front?
Nothing, zero.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing's, nothing's paid, those delivered.
That's.
And, and even Xpec said that I don't need that much upfront, but I'll need it as soon as the equipment comes in because she said that they won't let her keep that much on her line that she has with them.
Yeah, my only concern was, I mean, do we need the difference of two fifty kilowatts to two seventy-five? And if not, then we're okay with the Boyd Cat proposal. I'm not sure really.
I think the two fifty, the two fifty, according to the electricians, they, they say the two fifty should be five.
Yeah.
The two seventy-five is just what they do.
Right. Yeah, that's what they have.
With, with theirs and, uh, you know, through PALCO.
Right.
And, and, you know, that's why I agree with that, I mean, there's, uh, so what's the, uh, what's the pleasure, the council?
Go ahead and make a motion to accept, uh, the Boyd Cat proposal for the two hundred and fifty kilowatt generator for one hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say five, say nine.
Aha.
Any opposed, like, say? All righty. Next thing we've got is the floor bids and John passed those out. So this is actually, uh, the same floor that we put in and our office is up front and the, uh, uh, and clerk's office, John's office, police station, my office. And, uh, we've got a couple of bids, uh, one bid is first of all, the SOS carpet. And you see the sixteen thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents, we'll start with that one. And it, uh, the second estimate was the Edelman Construction. And on that, you're going to see, uh, yeah, twenty thousand, seventy dollars. And is their bid, uh, that was what we had with, uh, with the two bidders that came in. SOS Carpets, the one that did the, the offices and everything, uh, that's actually, uh, Steve Wolf, uh, who actually used to live in John's house. So he's a bellboy and born and raised around here. And that's actually doing the large meeting room and the hallways, uh, going down toward weight room and then going out toward the back door. And, uh, so that would be to replace that and then the large meeting rooms, so. So that would be to replace that. Now the, uh, we'll come back to that in just a second. The other part was, and we got Linda here, is, uh, in the walkway, when you first come in, the, uh, other doors back here, that part right in the middle, they would put this walk-off carpet towels. And it's a, it's like a carpet towel and everything, so, you know, it had to be swept and everything. And, uh, and then actually for that area right there, the glue and labor and all is eight hundred and forty dollars. Uh, Edelman did not put a bid in on that one at all. And so, uh, uh, so that's, uh, that's what came out of that one. But, uh, so first of all, I ask you, you know, what's the pleasure on trying to get this towel done? Uh, there is going to be some work and, uh, in the, uh, large meeting room, we had probably, what, twenty towels or so? Twenty or thirty? Uh, twenty or thirty towels that came up. Uh, they're stating that, you know, we would need to go ahead and take those back up again because they said if you leave it there, if there's any water on it whatsoever, they're gonna pop back up. What he would do, and he's actually got that in this bid, he would then go in there and take some, just the old towel that would fit that area and glue it down, put it back down and make it, you know, level surface all the way around. Then he would put the, uh, LVT flooring over top of all that. Uh, that's that part. And then the, the walk-off carpet towels, he's saying that, you know, the best thing to do out there in that front area just because if somebody comes in, they're wet and anything like that, some of those towns could be doing the same thing that what happened in there in the large meeting.
Well, it'd probably save people from falling too.
Yeah.
Because their water would come off their shoes and, you know.
Yep. So what's the, uh, what's the, the pleasure of the council to get that done? You know, we've got some towels back there, it's been, uh, had some chips and everything else in it, so, yeah, it's probably not the safest area. And, uh, and so what's the pleasure of the council?
I have a question.
Uh-huh.
If we're taxed, see, and I, I don't know this, that's why I'm asking, do we pay taxes and stuff like this?
No, we don't.
Okay, because that one says seven percent tax.
It, it does, but there's not any amount, that's what I did there real quick, I just added that, uh, that is twenty thousand, seventy bucks. And, uh, so she did not put any tax on that. And, uh, and none of those generated bids had taxes or anything, some of them said if there was, they would charge us, but we don't, I don't know. So.
I make a motion that we accept the SOS carpet out of the bid for sixteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty cents, which is actually the sixteen, one eleven eighty plus the eight forty.
Which is still cheaper than the current.
Well, it's still cheaper and we also, he, he actually done the work the first time, I mean, so we know what he, uh, we've already seen his, his work, so.
Are you all wanting to get the same color that's in the office?
Yeah, I think it's the same exact, right?
That tile is the hardest stuff to get clean. Because of the little paint drips in it.
Right.
And it scuffs so bad. The police station might have to.
Yeah, I think it does, uh, or DLS, or LVT.
LVT.
Um, will scuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's that tile, I think it's just LVT flooring generally.
Is there coating or something that comes out of it or?
No, I, there's not.
It's all pretty very hard to get clean. Because it's hard, keep the police station clean.
You do like the Delo Brokers and put that shiny stuff on it.
Yeah, I don't think you can do that with LVT flooring though.
That's what they have in there.
I don't think they have LVT, they have plumbing floor?
No, it's glued down.
Yeah, this, this is all glued.
I thought the everything, everything is.
It's a fluid floor.
You can glue it or.
They, 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 they're moving.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's all blue.
I don't know if you can do that to LVT flooring though.
You can do it just like that?
I know you can.
He, he, he does a lot of that in hospitals.
Yeah.
But I'm saying you can actually put, um,
Like a silicone?
A silicone or something.
Oh, I don't know, I'd ask him.
That's what I'm saying.
I'd ask him that. I could ask him that.
He worked in flooring, all, always loved.
Okay, then you know before I would.
I'll ask him, see what he says.
Okay.
It just looks gross. I mean, if you look at the ones at Brokers, it, it doesn't look real, this looks nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll check on that. Okay, we got a motion by John, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jacob. All those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed, like, say, so ordered. All righty, next thing is the holiday hours for town hall. And, uh, what, what the county is actually gonna do, and that's why I brought this up because right now we just had it set to take a half a day on the twenty-fourth and a whole day on the twenty-fifth. County is actually going to close both days. And then the thirty-first would be just a half a day. Uh, and then it'd be off January first, so, uh, what's the pleasure of the council there?
Half a day on thirty-first.
Half a day on twelve thirty-one, four day on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Declare both days holiday.
So you're declaring twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. And then you'd have four hours, or five hours, police department, twelve thirty-one.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know if we really need a motion on that day, I mean, that, in my opinion, that's up to you, I mean, you run the town.
Well, I just think, you know, I want to bring it up just to.
Sure.
I'll make a motion.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, you gonna make a motion? Okay, you got a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Nicole. All those in favor, say five, say nine.
Aha.
Any opposed, like, say? So ordered. I'll tell you what, I'm just bringing up the look tonight. Uh, okay, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, like, say, and so ordered. Surireed increase discussion. And, uh, we've been having this discussion in the sanitary meeting the last couple of months. Looking at the financial statements and, and we need to actually sit down with all you all and, and give you some numbers on the sanitary board. We're really running very short. And, uh, DEP has actually told us that we should, uh, have a second operator, which we haven't been doing that. We've actually utilized part of the street department a lot of times and had to use them again today uh, for another project up here on Thirteenth Street to pull a pump and everything. But with that being said, and while we're going in for the, uh, money through the IJDC that we actually put in this past week, number wise and everything, we're either, what, John, two thousand, four thousand? Uh, and there's a lot of months that we're in the negative.
Right.
Uh, just depends on what we're, what we're buying or paying for that month. With that being said, uh, we did this, uh, rate increase. We're thinking and, and, you know, and I think, uh, you know, here that we did this four years or so ago, four and a half years. And, uh, and we're to the point that, uh, you know, we, we really need a some more money. The expenses have keep, kept going up. We've got the, uh, new engineering company with, uh, Thrasher. Triad, you know, had done pretty much a lot of the things they'd been doing for years. We would like to possibly, uh, uh, right now, just ask for a, up to a ten percent rate, or ten percent rate increase. For the ones that are paying four dollars and, uh, or forty dollars and thirty-one cents, that's gonna be an increase of ten percent of four bucks. So anybody that's paying them in the bill of forty, thirty, isn't it forty, thirty?
Forty, twelve, I think.
Forty, twelve. Uh, that'd be like forty-four dollars and twelve cents or whatever. Uh, but, uh, uh, so it's not a lot on each bill, uh, but, you know, as water usage is higher on some people, those bills will be a little higher. But just on like our, uh, seniors and, and, you know, people that just have minimum bills, and there's a bunch of them, uh, that'd be about a four dollar increase. But, you know, we need to increase this because we feel, and even the engineers are suggesting that if we don't, then, uh, DEP or IJDC, who's got that paperwork right now, which we're gonna be probably February before we really know whether or not we could get that two million dollars that we asked for. And that two million dollars would be a grant, not a loan, so we would not have to pay that back. Uh, last year, you all know, we were able to get eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix up, uh, West Reynolds Avenue. And we replaced both the storm drain and the sanitary sewer. Uh, now we're working on, uh, East and West Gardner, we're working on East Reynolds, we're working on East and West Central and East and West River View. And we've also got a line that goes all the way from Gardner up underneath a bunch of houses through, uh, Canal Street, Reynolds Avenue, Central Avenue and River View. So, you know, we're, we're looking at taking that out of there and actually, uh, you know, taking it up Canal Street and then running it down River View and getting it out from underneath people's houses.
So we don't have problems if we hit them.
Well, and we've had some problems with that line, so. You know, and the thing is, two million dollars ain't gonna fix all that area. So we're gonna have to go back, you know, probably in another year or a year and a half and, you know, apply for some more money. Because right now, I think the estimate with Triad was, you know, close to six, six or seven million dollars. And, uh, right now, we're, we think we're close to possibly getting two million dollars. So it's, it's not gonna be the, you know, things all for, for that whole area. And then from there, you know, hopefully we can just continue on up through Bell and, uh, you know, try to replace it all before and so on. But, you know, we're looking at lines, and they came down and camera tested and everything else. And it'd been raining, and I was actually in the truck with them down there when they were running the camera through there. There's a couple of places down there that the water is just shooting into that line. And, uh, so we've got a lot of what they call HI, uh, infiltration and everything into our line. You know, right now, our sewer, you know, is, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood. And, you know, right now, our sewer, you know, is, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood, two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand gallons a day. But there's been times down there daily that we've grossed over a million gallons. You know, if some of these rains that we had. So, you know, it's something that's not sustainable. And, you know, so we've got to do some work on some of these lines. It's either that or, you know, we do like some other towns, just sell it. And then I'd see what, you know, the water company would charge, you know, everybody, so... Uh, I, I figure it's probably going to be more than forty bucks or something.
Yeah, and some of these people that have some houses.
Yep, yep. So what's the pleasure, you know, of the council? Because council would have to approve this ordinance as we did before. And, uh, you know, we don't see any other way around it. I actually did notify the governor's office this past week and, and I actually asked if there was any money left before the governor left that we wouldn't mind having a million or two million dollars. That was to his chief of staff and I know he got it because I talked to him the other day. He said, "I got your, your, your thing." So I know they're asking, but we, we don't have any answers yet. But we still have about two weeks or three weeks or so before the governor either resigns and goes on to the senate or just waits until his time's up, so...
Do we have to have a public meeting for that?
We do. We have to do that, same we did before.
The, this is actually just to...
This is just to start and, you know, write the ordinance, get the ordinance together. I think we've got an ordinance already from before. All we have to do is take that ordinance and, you know, then we got to predict the, uh, the rates, the fees and all that that would be charged and actually publish all that. And then there's a lot of documents that has to go into PSC, which, you know, I did before. I've still got all those, so, you know, had to go back and redo that whole thing again, ask for a rating increase and everything. And then we'll have a, an attorney's firm come in, we'll be ready. It'd be a bond counsel attorney, uh, that would come in and actually, you know, sound off and everything. And we've got to get an accountant to, uh, to do it, same thing we did last time. So we've got an accountant already, uh, that would do it, so, you know, again, it's just, it costs you some money to do it, you know, just to get it done. So that's the big...
And that's what I was wondering, if we have to do everything all over again like we did before, so...
Yeah, do it just like we did before.
Okay.
And believe me, I spent a number of hours on it, so... It's not something I'd really like to do again, but, uh...
Yeah, I don't think any of this would.
No.
But, uh, I mean, I guess I'll make a motion to start setting up the ordinance and start preparing a date for the, uh, town hearings and everything to kind of get that process started.
Alrighty, got a, got a question by Jacob. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we'll, any discussion from anybody?
Uh, well, so this was approved in the sanitary meeting, about the sanitary meeting announcement is one of those.
Not hearing anything. All those in favor, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? So ordered. Uh, approval of invoices, don't think we have any of that? The next thing is, uh, Christmas bonuses. Uh, you've got a list in your pocket there. And, uh, you will see that, uh, this is pretty much about the same thing we had last year. And, uh, but we've got raises for our street and garbage department, police department, the clerk, the custodian and recreation director. So, uh, so we do have the allocation there. So, uh, at this time, if it's good with you all, we'll entertain a motion to pay the Christmas bonuses.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
Question by Melanie, do we have a second? Second by Nicole. All those in favor, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? So ordered. Alrighty, police department report, you've got that in your pocket there. Any questions from anybody? Alrighty. Not hearing anything. Move on. Uh, let me see, items from the mayor. I don't really have anything tonight. I had, there's a couple things I put on the agenda. And, uh, I think one thing I will say is, uh, we did have our Thanksgiving dinner and the Christmas dinner. Uh, we had Santa Claus here on Saturday, had the Christmas parade. I think everything went well. I think everybody was pretty pleased with, uh, the meals. Ms. Siner, we appreciate your, your vote and everything. Appreciate having you here, Ms. Christmas Blue, Jerry. And, uh, so... Uh, but other than that, uh, you know, I, I'd like to say Merry Christmas to everybody. I know, uh, you all do not have a, a present yet from me. I will be around to see all of you. And, uh, I'm sorry, I'm running a little bit behind. I, I've actually worked a couple days this week and I'm supposed to have been on vacation for the rest of the year. But I've been in Logan for a couple days, so... So it's been a, been a, been a bad deal. So hopefully, uh, I'm, I'm told today that I don't have to go back tomorrow, so, uh, so I think I should be in good shape. But, uh, it, it, it converted the bank over. It, uh, it helped the bonus pool a little bit this year for me, so, uh, so that was pretty good. So I'll do that anytime I give anybody. Items to town attorney, I don't know if Ray has anything. He didn't say when I talked to him the other day, but I kind of thought he was going to be here tonight, but... Items from council, Nicole?
Uh, just want to bring up Bingo. Um, starting, restarting Bingo in January, the fourth, I guess that, or is it Friday the third? Or is it Saturday?
Friday the first, yeah.
It says the fourth.
Yeah.
Yep.
Six block.
So we'll do the pizzas and twenty-five dollar gift cards again. Do all that. I'll get all that taken care of.
That's all I have.
That's it?
Yeah.
Melanie?
I'd like to say I wish we would have had more bit, more people out as far as on the list to decorate. There was only eight people that signed up this year. But first place was, and I don't know where they're, three twenty-three Fifth Street, East Fifth Street, about first place.
Maybe three twenty-three?
Uh-huh, East Fifth Street.
Yeah, what place?
First place.
First place?
And then I think it's...
Send me.
I sent it to you, what was the, the one on River View, the address? Was it eleven?
Twelve oh eight.
Twelve oh eight, River View, about second place.
Who's that, Ms. Blue?
No, it's, it's down there, almost at the end.
The Spitz, the Dalton?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Twelve oh eight East Fifth.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And then, um, five, three eighteen Fifth Street, about third place.
Three eighteen?
No, three eighteen Fifth Street.
Fifth Street.
Mm-hmm.
So two from Fifth and the top three? Cool.
There's a lot of houses decorated, but they just didn't participate in the contest.
Who's?
I see Harris House, three eighteen.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I think so, I'm not sure. Off to the daycare?
No, it's down at the other end.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's, uh, so we do a hundred dollars on first place, seventy-five on second and fifty dollars on third. Right?
I was thinking it was twenty-five on third.
I was thinking it was twenty-five for second, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Oh, wasn't? Okay, who's got the papers?
They're the house, yeah.
Those have the names on them, don't they?
No, all we have is the addresses.
Is the addresses?
Land's about the...
President said land can get it.
Land has the name, so I asked for not to give them the...
So that way we can cut the checks for them.
Yeah, I asked for not to give them the land and that way nothing can be said.
Okay, yep. And, uh, you know, I was going to say, we, uh, we did pay the bands and everything for the parade. We did pay, uh, uh, Santa Claus as we've done in the past. And then the, uh, uh, the other thing that we did was take the pictures and, uh, uh, for Pastor Riley for the City of Hope and we wrote them a check for two hundred dollars for the...
That'll help, they were good, you said, for the food bank.
Yeah, they were going in for the food baskets and everything, so... So we'll get these other checks cut and we'll get those out and, uh, thank you very much. That's it?
You need to Christmas, you need to New Year's Eve, yeah.
Oh, New Year's, New Year's Eve, yeah.
New Year's Eve, thirty-first, seven to nine thirty?
Seven to nine thirty, five dollar prepaid.
Start when?
Seven, the doors will open at six.
At six, okay.
But the food won't be served or anything until seven.
Oh, okay. And, and there's, we'll still five dollars to come in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alrighty, that's it?
Yes, that's it.
John?
Yeah, I do have a note that was sent to us, so two months ago maybe. Um, council voted to give, um, the robotics team of elementary some money. And they just sent us a thank you card, just thanks for supporting us. It means more than we could ever say. And has a, the signatures of all the kids that are on the team as well, so... Uh, just wanted to say that we did get that from the robotics team. Uh, I was told that it's actually a newer program, I think. I think they've had for several years, but they haven't really completed. And the, um, teacher that's actually running the program was extremely excited, so she appreciated it.
Alrighty, thanks, John.
Alright, okay.
Nothing for me.
Nothing?
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 Okay. Alright, next thing is the approval for visitors to address council?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Melanie, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Nicole. All those in favor, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? So, alright, here. Mrs. Blue? You think, Lynn? Any other?
Just that I think it's nice that, uh, when the kindergarten teachers, when their class got picked for, uh, by the first lady, uh, to represent Christmas, for Santa Claus, the kids did an ornament.
Yeah, Mr. Underwood.
The same.
Yeah, I forgot about that, actually. That was, uh, I guess there was a contest, there's a first lady, uh, I don't know her first name, Mrs. Justice. Cover of Justice is why.
Yeah. Oh, you think they had ornament.
Well, didn't you, Rob?
Yeah.
That was Mr. Underwood's kindergarten class.
Oh, his class?
Yeah.
Chad, anything? Alrighty.
Um, I brought it back about the driveways and stuff today and the mayor's going to talk to the pastor about it. Does the child want something else?
Okay.
Okey-dokey. How about most new during? Anybody want to?
Everybody wants.
John, John, look at that town. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Nicole, all those in favor, say five, say aye. Any opposed, like sign? Uh, nobody opposed. We'll stand adjourned. Thank you all very much. Merry Christmas.
Everybody have a Merry Christmas.